All right, go ahead and open the Tuesday, June 7, 2016, March and Board of Alderman, Public Hearing Session, open. I believe this gave up here, come on up.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The sewer, I would like to make part of the public record, the municipal code by reference, and the public hearing notice that was published in the Warren County Record on May 19, 2016. For the revenue bonds that were issued for the sewer expansion project, we had forecasted the water sewer rates for the next 10 years in order to make sure there was funding to maintain the system. So for the 2016-2017 budget, the amount is 4 percent was projected. So for the sewer, the average in-town residential customer will see an increase of 86 cents per month, and the average in-town commercial customer will see an increase of $2.49 per month.
Any questions? Comments? All right. Are you going to address the proposed rate increase, use consumption of water within outside? We have two separate ones. You're combining them in one?
No, the sewer is same deal with the 4 percent for this budget year, so the average in-town residential customer would see an increase of 77 cents per month, and the average in-town commercial customer will see an increase of $2.80 per month.
Any questions or comments?
No.
Any questions or comments from the public? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With that being said, I'll go ahead and bring the public hearing section of the March and Board of Alderman Meeting for Tuesday, June 7, 2016, to a close. I'll open the regular Board of Alderman Meeting for Tuesday, June 7, 2016, at this time, and ask that you please rise for Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item would be Consent Agenda.
First item is the work session minutes from May 10, 2016, for development proposal, B, regular meeting minutes from May 17, 2016, C, executive session minutes from May 17, 2016, D, work session minutes from May 24, 2016, developmental agreement, and E, liquor license renewals for 2016-2017.
Any questions or comments? I'll entertain a motion for approval of the Consent Agenda items.
Remove. Second.
Motion. Motion made by Alderman Miller, second by Alderman Schultz. Roll call, please.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Shel Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Casserly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Deloitte?
Yes.
Roach Kerry, 6-0. Next agenda will be hearing from the public. We ask that you keep your comments to a five-minute maximum. We ask that you come to the podium, state who you are, and advise us what business you have.
Hello, I've talked to you through guys already about my little problem up here. I just thought I'd bring a little nostalgia with me. This was a...
If you could just stay here a little first, for the record.
I'm Fred Callaway, I own brewskies up on Main Street here, I'm sorry, gang. This is a watercolor George Cheeseman did 30 years ago when we came down to the city to see if we could put a restaurant in and go to the bank for some money. And of course, I just brought this down just to remind you all that I'm only 57, so that means half my life has been down here already, 209 East Main, more than half.
30 good ones though, right Fred?
When I bought the place, they told me that I had to put my own sidewalk in, okay, which I thought was funny, maybe I should run like hell then, but I did it because they wouldn't give me an occupancy permit without it. Now, they told me I didn't own anything the other side of the sidewalk, I couldn't do nothing to that. But one of the steps deteriorated on both sides, I asked my mayor, who would they sue, me or him? And the mayor said, well, they'd sue you Fred. So I asked my insurance guy, who was my mayor's son, and I said, who would they sue? And he said, oh, they'd sue the city. So without getting into a big discussion, I just paid for the steps as well. So now I got 10 grand in sidewalks and steps. And the city came by and did do a little excavation off Main Street last year, and I got to keep Band-Aids and gauze to patch up the little old ladies that can't make the 15-inch step that they left us to the step, exposing a footing of a curb on Main Street that hasn't shown in the 30 years that I've owned the place. So between one staircase eight feet over that's perfect, they must have had all engineers involved to get to this one, because now I got a 15-inch step for a whole parking space and a half. I've shown you guys that. Karen, I know you've come up with that, everybody knows what I'm talking about. I don't think I'm asking too much for half-load asphalt and best guy to feather it out a little bit. I think I appreciate it, I deserve it, and if I got to patch one more old person up down there, I'm going to get a little upset, so. I don't think it's my responsibility, I think I've come to the street, and I think you guys should meet me at the street, you know? Okay?
That's fair.
I guess it's something we need to pass on to Guy.
Be something we have to pass along to, if you would, please.
There's been several of us that's witnessed it, and Fred's right on, right on with everything he's saying. I don't, I don't know why it's taken so long to get it taken care of, but we certainly, I feel that we're obligated to, to help him out and get it taken care of.
Appreciate you.
We can have Guy go up there and take a look at it, correct? Thank you. We'll let you know.
I appreciate it.
Appreciate it. Anyone else in the public?
Thank you, Astrid.
Good day.
All right, not seeing anyone else, we'll move on to the next item, and that would be the Board of Alderman comments.
Well, I do have a comment.
Sure.
In regards to, and I'm not 100% sure this is the exact time to bring it up, but I think there's been several of us, has been notified about the condemnation of the sign down 47, and I'm not exactly sure of the solution, but it certainly should have some attention in regards to that particular ordinance, and I'm not sure how to address it, Chris.
I know we have addressed it and spoken about it, and I think we're looking into options. Is it on the agenda? It is not. So can we, can you kind of get us up to speed so that we know what all the details are, if it's been addressed?
Well, from what I understand, there's more than one, or several signs down 47, with the condemnation of the 47 to 15-foot easement. Jack is real familiar with it, I've talked several times with Jack, and it seems like the city's hands are somewhat tied, and I'm trying to figure out how to untie them. And it seems to me that it's tied up with an ordinance that just doesn't make sense. I'm not by any means telling to eliminate the ordinance, but we've got signs that's been up for 40 years, they're not in anybody's way. The state doesn't really want to take responsibility, the state doesn't want to take responsibility, and if someone wants to improve the sign, we can't really give them a go-ahead either way. According to the ordinance that I understand with Jack's assistant, and I don't know the solution.
So Terry had me look at this today, and I looked at it a little bit last week with Jack. So essentially what's happening is the old Peaches and Cream location, that sign, basically that building has not been occupied, I think, for seven or eight years, I think, is that, is that right?
As long as it has, I think.
Oh, seven, okay. So it's been about nine years since somebody occupied that building. Well, what happened was, that sign was legal and was not within, we have a pretty standard ordinance that says you cannot locate a sign within 15 feet of the MoDOT right-of-way, for safety reasons, obviously, for visibility and whatnot. And so basically what happened when there was a condemnation of that property that took place, you know, when they took part of that for 47, for the expansion of the highway, MoDOT did that, it essentially took certain signs out of compliance with our ordinances. Now, at that point in time, a property owner had one of two choices. They could, if their business was still in business, their sign could remain, it's a legal non-conforming use. It was legal prior to the change, and so it remained as a legal non-conforming use as a result of the MoDOT action. We also have an ordinance that says if your sign was not conforming with the 15-foot, you know, setback prior, you could move it to whatever the prior setback was after the condemnation. So essentially what's happened with this particular sign is that it's in a state of disrepair, there's a new business that has gone in there, there hasn't been a business in there, I think, since Peaches and Cream, I think that's what it was called, I'm not sure, but something like that. So essentially what it is, is you've got a pole with a dilapidated sign that Jack, under our current ordinance, does not have the authority to issue a building permit because it's within the MoDOT right-of-way. Now, one of the things we were looking at is, there was a, an argument that was put forward saying, well, this may have been a continuous use of what's known as a grandfathered sign, that, you know, I've sent Terry an email, how we've handled grandfather issues in the past, is where essentially the applicant can submit evidence of the legal use either continuing without interruption, or the legal use occurring prior to the adoption of the zoning code and being a continuous use where the zoning code wouldn't apply. And we've done that before, and we've looked into it, and we've granted those, you know, basically grandfather, or given them kind of legal non-conforming use status, you know, after I've reviewed it and staff has reviewed it. So, you know, basically where we're at right now is there's been a interest to submit an application to change the sign that's up there. That has to be denied because it is within 15 feet of the MoDOT right-of-way, that's what our ordinance says, there's no way around it. The question is, I think, what John's point is, hey, I understand, staff's got to do their job, and I understand we have this ordinance, and I think Jack sat down and explained to John, and John, I know you understand kind of where Jack's perspective is, and his job is ministerial, he looks at the code, he applies it, and, you know, the sign's there. So the question is, what can they do next? I mean, you know, one of the things, and obviously I can't give them legal advice, if they apply for a variance, it's a pretty obvious geographical shift in the property that's not at the fault of the property owner, that maybe they get a variance for the sign to replace the sign the way it is. Or if you guys want to consider changing the ordinance, whether the 15-foot setback or some type of text amendment to change their particular situation with regards to the sign. Now, I know there were some other signs that were brought up, but those signs have been in continuous use since the condemnation. This sign has not been in continuous use, and that's, you know, basically the issue, you know, we debated this a while back when we did our high-rise sign district, and we went through the entire sign code. The issue was, we don't want, we want to, if a business is out, we want them to take the sign down. We don't want the sign to remain up, we don't want it to be non-conforming. You know, so there, you know, for a long time, in the high-rise sign district we had, one of the biggest issues we had were tall signs that advertised something that didn't exist in Warrenton, and so we've gotten that kind of straightened out with that section of the code. So, you know, you know, it's one of those things, that it's kind of a unusual fact circumstance with regards to the ordinance as it exists right now. We're looking into it, I've reviewed it today, and we're giving some information back to say, hey, if you think this is illegal non-conforming, give us some evidence, so we have something in our file to look at, whether it's illegal non-conforming. If it's not illegal non-conforming, you guys consider amending the code that would allow a sign in a situation like this, or you guys can, you know, Board of Adjustment can consider variance.
Should we have, in the past, because it's obvious that property's been vacant forever and dilapidated and terrible-looking, should we have a city, in hindsight, made them take down the sign?
Yeah, I think, do we have a code provision?
Theoretically, there should have been a letter sent, yes.
Yes.
But is the sign tied to the owner or tied to the, to the business? Because, I mean, if you go into a property owner's situation there, and you have a pre-existing pole and sign, so you're the business, you come in, you put up a new sign on an existing pole, your business goes out, the owner of the property really hasn't done anything, he continues to own the property, and it would seem like we're trying to make the new business jump through some hoops. You know, I guess if I'm the property owner, I'm going, hey, wait a minute, you know, I haven't done anything. I own this property, I own this sign, it's been there forever, why am I being penalized because I've got new business coming in, or it's a disincentive for me to bring new business in if I know I'm going to have this problem? Because I'm trying to do everything I can to lease this property out. So the ordinance sounds like it's tied to the business, but if you're leasing the business, why isn't it tied to the property owner?
Really, honestly, Gary, that's really a tenant and a landlord's decision, how they want to apply for the sign. The sign's specific to the, what is contained on the sign, but, you know, really, you know, a lot of, you know, property owners will say, tenant, that's your responsibility, you do the sign, you do this. Some property owners will say, I'll take care of it, I'll put the sign in my name and do this. What's so unusual about this situation is, it's really a unique fact scenario, and I, you know, I don't think the ordinance is intended to have a punitive effect, the intent of the ordinance is to say, we want all our signs 15 feet back from the right-of-way, but when the state comes in and moves the location of the right-of-way, and then a business goes out, we only have the ordinances as they apply right now. I mean, it's just a very clear interpretation of the ordinance, but we do not mandate to a property owner or a tenant who applies for the sign, or who can apply for the sign. If a tenant applies for a sign, then typically we request they get permission, so they have permission to put the sign up on the property owner's, you know, property, but a property owner could come in and apply, or a tenant can. That's really their choice on how they want that sign to be approved by the city, and how that sign to have, you know, future use.
Yeah, I mean, I could see, whatever the sign says, the literal verbiage would be something the business would apply for, but the physical structure that exists, that the sign sits on, really is owned by the business owner.
Totally agree, but some people have the tenant's apply, some people have the business owner's apply, and Brandon, you know that, I mean, we don't get into whose responsibility, you know, or who's required to apply for it, because, you know, it, you know, some, you know, some property owners take care of it, some, you know, tenants take care of it. So, you know, and I, I mean, I totally understa, it's a very unique circumstance with our ordinance, it really is, because our ordinance doesn't anticipate a sign being up, condemnation happening, you know, our, we have an ordinance related to condemnation, but it says if your sign was in an illegal spot before, you can move it back to an illegal spot with the same distance it was at before, but you still have to move it, you know? So if your sign was within three feet of the right-of-way, and your property was condemned, you can put it within, you can move it to within three feet of the right-of-way, but...
Sure, it's, I mean, I know it's a unique situation.
It is, it really is.
Nobody has a crystal ball, we can't see the future of what's going to be condemned, but, you know, we do have a situation here that's basically in limbo, and I feel a little bit responsible, responsible that we've got to come up with some type of solution. There's nobody that can write ordinances predicting what's going to be in the future. That particular business there, and I agree with Karen, that the building was rundown and so on and so forth, but here's an opportunity, that somebody is actually going to make an investment, make the building look better, and we should be encouraging that small business, but in the same respect, they're getting the feeling that we're discouraging from small businesses.
Well, and I think, John, I read...
And nobody intends on doing anything bad, everyone's doing a great job.
Right, and I read the email, and she was very complimentary on how staff has dealt with her, and, and she actually had two signs already approved, and a third square sign that she was getting approved, and then there's the pole sign. So she was very complimentary of staff, frustrated with the process, frustrated with how, you know, the fact that, you know, you look at this pole, and you say there's an old sign there, why can't it replace it? And Karen, you're right, we have a code provision that says if your business is out of business for what, Jack, a year, one year, you have to take it down, you're required, and that's pretty standard in most cities. And we're, you know, we're trying to figure out a way to see, you know, because on a straight application, it doesn't meet the setback. Now, we have information that maybe it could be illegal non-conforming use, and we've responded, I've sent that, after looking at it today, I sent them a response back, you know, sent to Terry saying, hey, look, if they feel it's illegal non-conforming use, let's look and see if it is. We'll give them an opportunity to provide an affidavit like we do with any legal non-conforming uses, analyze it under our code and see where it's at. At that point, if it's not a legal non-conforming use, then I think you guys have a decision, do you want to change the code, or maybe put, I know it sounds silly, a special overlay district for illegal non-conforming use signs, but it happens all the time. You know, you guys can legislate a change, or they can go to Board of Adjustment, but, you know, where Jack's at, as the building commissioner, he's got this, you know, ministerial task of, does it meet the code? And if it doesn't meet the code, he can't issue a building permit, or a sign permit, and that's just kind of where it's at. Kind of figuring out a way to either massage it through or whatnot, that's why we're going to send them the information saying, hey, give us evidence and proof of, you know, an affidavit or something of illegal non-conforming use, see if that's there and it applies, and if it doesn't, bring it back to you guys and say, hey, you know, you guys may want to consider a legislative change, or, you know, we've already given them the information for the Board of Adjustment to get a variance on it. And I know it's difficult, but like I said, her email was complimentary of how we've handled it as a city, as far as, you know, dealing with them, and we've already got their signs approved. There are other signs, it's just this one sign, there are other two signs, they've already, I think they've already got them off, right Jack?
The two, I almost circled them up, but they're approved.
The thing I found confusing about it, though, was in the text I got, at one point, the property owner was saying, okay, it was, it was not a discontinued use because it was a sign that had a, had a message on there, for rent, which, and then on the other side, then he, when I said, well, you could maybe seek a variance on it and everything, and then all of a sudden, well, it's the tenant's sign. So that's what was confusing. At one point, you're, they were arguing this way, that, you know, it should be, you know, the property owner has this rights and that, that, but then, now it's the tenant's sign, so we should, you know, bend over backwards to try to get it done, which I agree, I think something needs to be done, but evidently they didn't think my idea of a variance was very acceptable, so.
There's no record of the property owner ever having a permit for it. It's always been a matter...
It's always been, yeah.
And, and that's a decision some property owners do, some don't, you know, and, and I mean, I think the point about the property being vacant for a period of time is obviously, you know, a good point, and, you know, like I said, we're doing everything we can to try to figure out, is there an exception to the code? Because it is a very unique situation, I mean, condemnation, in my time in, around the city of Warrenton, it's happened one time, and that's with regards to Highway 47.
Alderman Miller, do you have a comment?
No, I just was going to say, I guess if I was a property owner in town who was trying to lease property, my response to the city would be, this is way too complicated to be sitting here having the city saying, we're encouraging business, when this becomes so problematic and so time-consuming, it just doesn't seem like we're business-friendly with this aspect of it.
But they are in the process still, correct? You said you sent information asking for...
Yeah, I mean, and, and look, if you guys want to change the setback requirement, you know, I mean, because all Jack can do is the, the task of reviewing it, I, you know, there's, he doesn't have discretion in reviewing the sign permit, that's my point, and so, and I understand it's complicated, but, but condemnation is its own set of facts that's totally different than...
There again, there again, you've thrown out a lot of things, let me just streamline this. From what I'm hearing, there's still a process that we're proceeding with, that you've sent a recommendation out being our legal counsel, and once that comes back, then we may be approached again on an agenda item to either amend or adjust anything, if that's what we choose to do. So I think we still need some facts brought into us from that to be able to proceed anywhere further.
Because we really don't have a lot of information on the legal non-conforming, it's just the text, and I got the same text this week.
Okay, just to take it one step further, since we are making progress, everybody's doing everything we can do to make business friendly, would it be, would this be the time, Chris, to maybe further look down 47, and where there could possibly, so if we're going to change something, or give some advice, or that we could address this in the future to streamline, maybe somebody else is going to have a problem in the future?
I think no doubt, if you can, that's what we did with the overlay, high sign overlay district, was we tried to look at every sign that was over a certain amount of feet, bring them into conformity with the overlay district, and set forth regulations that would move forward, and I think it's been really successful, because if you remember about six or seven years ago, we had a ton of old signs that advertised businesses that were not there anymore. So, yeah, I mean, I think that's definitely a task for planning and zoning to consider.
Is there anything we have to do to get that, to get that started?
I mean, if you guys want to...
Just wait till we get some response back. If we're going to get some response back, I guess, we'd be the, follow what we...
I mean, if you're talking about looking at other areas to see if there's anything that's in need, I mean, I think that's something we could have our zone officers or building people take a look at as well, if everything's in compliance, or albeit, but if you're asking for something that we're going to look for in an amendment or any type of issue, that's something that we're going to have to file through planning and zoning, and we're going to have to come up with as a collective, maybe a workshop or something.
Well, we, we could, it seems like we continuously come up with just small problems that nobody thought of, in regards to planning and zoning and different zoning, and every meeting that I've been attended to, everybody on this board, and everybody in this room has always been focused on trying to make business, more business-friendly, and we're, like, we're eliminating problems as we see them. What I'm asking is, can we look in the future if this, if this sign, the problem with the sign, not just that location, but if we're going to do any changes, sure, we'll wait for recommendations and, but try to, try to do something to fix them all.
Yeah, and no, no offense, because I agree, but in the three years or whatever I've been on this board, I think we've spent so much time on signs, I mean, this is something that, my God, we waste more time talking about signs, than we finally just said, put the signs up, you know, we finally quit enforcing putting the signs up anymore, I mean, it, I don't know how much, I don't know how much more lenient we can get.
And I think that, you know, and the thing is, you know, John brought up the business-friendly thing, and, you know, we've heard from some of the more recent businesses, Plaza Tire, who said they were one of the easiest cities, they've got, I don't know how many locations, one of the easiest cities they've had to work with, when they came into town, for all the inspections, for everything, permits and everything. And that was one of the things, I heard emails where at Keven's location, and where they're so far loading down there, they've been highly complimentary of it, how easy it was and that. I think the problem is, is some of these older locations where you have the smaller business people that are trying to reuse these older locations.
Yeah, I don't know if it's a smaller, yeah, if it's a small, older properties, but I think it's the businesses that can't afford to hire an architectural firm and have them come down and present a P and Z, that they're trying to start something going on, and we have to hold them to certain standards, but in the course of doing that, it becomes very difficult if they're not in a position where they can, you know, hire a firm that says, well, I have expertise in this, and I can help you through this process. The big ones, Plaza Tire, Emos, they're not going to have issues, and we probably knock ourselves over to help them, because they have professionals that they've hired on, but it's the ones that don't have that, that, you know, I think that's where we run into some of the problems. But they still have to be held to the same standard, so it's a real tricky thing. My suggestion, I mentioned to Terry the other day, is I wonder if we need to take four or five of the smaller businesses that have come into town, sit down, have lunch with them, have our staff, and have maybe a couple board members sit down, and just kind of tell us about your experience, tell us about the process, how do you think the process could be done easier next time, or what changes would you suggest? Then we have a chance to look at it from the perspective of the other side of the table. I think that would be very beneficial.
That's something we can look into in the future. Guys, I think we've, we've spent a lot of time on this, I think we're going to move on to the next item. If you could, please research that on some, like what Alderman Miller suggested about looking into the future as far as what we could adjust, and let, keep us updated on what you, the responses you get, Chris, please. Thank you. Any other comments or suggestions? I'll keep mine pretty brief. Received a letter, I just wanted to kind of give some kudos to some of our staff. Received a letter from a lady who said, she just wanted to let us know that the city of Warrenton has an awesome animal control officer. She lost her blue healer from Moscow Mills last week, there was a spotting of a blue healer in Wright City area. In the search, I contacted your animal control officer to leave my name. She gave me more information on Facebook pages to post lost dogs and the company that contracts with the city of Wright City for animal control. I'm sure her job can be thankless, and I called her back to personally thank her again for her help, but I wanted the city of Warrenton and its officials to know she is a great asset to your city. asset to your city. Thank you sincerely, Donna Ryan. And I think those, sometimes we don't always get the rate those, and when we get those, I think it's great to just give those people the praise it deserves, and definitely, she went out of her way to help out, so I appreciate that. If you could pass that along, I'd appreciate it as well.
I will.
All right, next item on the agenda would be a request for Village of Pendleton for annexation, a letter for Highway B. Any questions or comments?
Well, yeah, my only question on this, and I'm sure it'll be answered, is, since that part of Highway B isn't in the city, why do we have to issue a letter? It's not connected.
That's what may have been answered.
That's my only question.
Good evening, Mayor and Board, I'm Brandon with Livingston Beatty, serving. So, the Village of Pendleton is requesting a letter from you guys for support or approval of allowing them to annex the highlighted portion, I think you guys have the highlighted copy, there's a little, you know, J-shaped piece there, that they're looking to annex into the Village of Pendleton. We've finally, after about three years, got through the annexation of the railroad, which was a small miracle in itself, but that's all taken care of now, and there's, so the next step is to do a voluntary annexation through MODAT, is what they're requesting. So, I believe, a few months ago, they had written a letter, do you remember when the original letter was, Melody?
No.
I don't remember, it was a couple of months ago, though, and, you know, they basically sent a letter to, for the voluntary annexation, one of the things it says is a letter from any municipality within, within a five-mile radius of the site. So that would be City of Warrenton, City of Truesdale, just barely, City of Jonesburg, and then Warren, and we went ahead and just did Warren and Montgomery Counties, just to cover our bases. So, we've sent all those out, we've received some of those back, but they, they said they do, they do need those, along with some other paperwork, you know, neighbor, that the neighbors are okay with it, and things like that.
So this is basically just stating that MODAT wants to know that we're not having, we don't have any intention to go down that far on being an annex or anything else.
Yeah, I... If I can, we did this a couple of years back, when we did a voluntary annexation westbound, MODAT has their own process for voluntary annexation that's different than involuntary. Village of Pendleton, when we did the large chunk westbound a couple of years ago, provided us a letter for that westbound annexation, and they require it in order for MODAT to sign the petition for the voluntary annexation. So, it's not required by state laws, it's their policy and their procedure for voluntary annexation.
That's correct.
Why, why is the, why is it so small? I mean, because you, I mean, you would have thought that they would have, is there some distance limitations, like when you annex down the highway, there's a distance limitation? Is that why this is such a small piece?
Not necessarily. I mean, I know on the involuntary, there is a maximum, there's a formula of 15% of your adjacent furniture, or something like that, but basically, this was, this was all that they thought they needed, so they didn't, they didn't want to, you know, they didn't want to reach out and grab a whole bunch, and...
What's the point of the little piece that shoots off to the east?
Pendleton Cut Off Road.
Yeah, that, that, that road to the east is Pendleton Cut Off, that runs out to the service road. Basically, that was, that was to get up to, you know, to have a piece adjacent to that Doиг, Daryl and Joyce Doиг property, if for some reason, they would want...
Is that an existing road?
Yes.
Yes, Pendleton Cut Off, it's, it's...
It's a red road.
It's paid now, yeah.
I guess I don't, it's a Pendleton very often.
It is a little piece.
So that's, that's, that's what they're requesting from you guys, as a letter, and if anybody has any other questions, I...
Any other questions or comments?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the mayor signing in for a letter of support for the Village of Pendleton for annexation of, for Highway B. Show a vote.
Second.
Motion made by Alden Scholz, signed by Alden Delloy, if I could roll a call vote, please.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Schol Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries six zero. All right, next item on the agenda will be the approval of liquor and, by the drink liquor license for Elks Lodge number 2662, located at 101 East Veterans Memorial Parkway.
Were these not on the earlier list in the consent agenda, because they both relate? Is that why?
No, they're different, they change...
It's new ownership, or, new officers.
New officers.
...on the liquor license.
Okay.
Basically, with the Elks, it's a new exalt, his name.
Any questions or comments? All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the liquor, the liquor, by the drink liquor license.
Sorry.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve the liquor by the drink liquor license for the Elks Lodge 2662. Motion made by Alden Schultz, seconded by Aldman Miller, if I could roll a call vote, please.
Alderman Schol Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Motion carries six zero, thank you. All right, next item in the agenda will be the approval of liquor by the drink liquor license for the Hideout 2 LLC, located at 405 West Veterans Memorial Parkway.
Is this the same thing, different owner, or...
Same, yeah, they're changing, changing ownership, changing case and liquor license.
Any other questions or comments?
No.
Questions or comments?
So, this individual, I would assume this individual has two liquor licenses in town, so you just apply for each location? Is that...
Each location has that.
Yeah, each one, so, yeah, but one person can be under multi apps, I assume.
Yes.
Any questions? I'll entertain a motion to approve the liquor by drink liquor license for the Hideout 2 LLC.
Sorry.
Motion made by Aldman Miller, seconded by Aldman Schultz. Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Listen, I'll keep you guys straight.
Roll call, okay. Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Schol Harvey?
Yes.
Motion carries six zero, thank you. All right, next item on the agenda will be the request for road closures on June 26th for the Warren County Fair Parade, southwest from Main, Main to Walton, and Walton from West Street to Market Street at 2:00 PM for the staging in Boonslick, Main Street from Southwest Street going east to city limits, and Pickney Street from city limits to high school entrance, 4:00 PM until 6:00 PM. Have we got that, or do you need me to repeat it?
I think it's right here.
Looks better than the map.
The Johnson.
Any questions?
Same path, right?
We got somebody here from the Warren County Fair, if you can, any questions or answers.
Questions or comments? All right, entertain a motion to approve the road closures for June 26th for the Warren County Fair Parade on June, on June 26th.
Sorry, I'm a second.
Bob? Mike?
Motion made by Alderman Delloy, seconded by Aldman Schol Harvey, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Schol Harvey?
Yes.
Motion carries six zero. Next item on the agenda will be a special, special permission for excessive noise for the Warren County Fair, June 29th through July 2nd.
You're bringing in AC/DC, is that right?
No, that's yours, Barbara, down there.
They don't even have a singer, they got Axl Rose.
Any questions or comments, anyone?
I have just, Paul Owenby from the Fair Association is here. Basically, is this just...
Just fail-safe, just to cover us in case. I was always understanding that the noise permit was later than what it was, and Melody checked into it for me, so we went ahead and applied for the noise deal, so we was, everything was on the up and up for the week of fair, just so we didn't break the ordinance or anything. I thought it was later than 10:30.
And just so people know that, watch this YouTube, you're extending it to 12:30 AM.
Right, and, and I really doubt, like, I told her, that maybe Friday or Saturday night, with fireworks and everything, those would be the only two nights, I'd really be concerned that it may run that late, but that way, everybody's aware of it, it could happen. You know, much of the weather we had last year with the rain and stuff, kind of pushed things back a couple nights, but, you know, that's the only reason I put every day down on or forward.
Excellent. Any questions?
Thank you.
No, thanks, thank you.
All right, we'll entertain a motion to approve the excessive noise permit for the Warren County Fair from June 29th through July 2nd.
Show a vote. I'll second.
Motion made by Aldman Schol Harvey, seconded by Aldman Schultz, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Schol Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes. Motion carries six zero, thank you. Thank you, Paul. Next item on the agenda will be the approval for multiple road closures on September 24th through 2016 for Fall Festival from 6:00 AM to midnight. Questions or comments? Question, comments, Anderson? All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the multiple road closures from September 24th for the Fall Festival from 6:00 AM to midnight.
A vote.
Second.
Motion made by Aldman Miller, seconded by Aldman Delloy, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Schol Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Schol Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Schol Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Schol Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Schol Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Schol Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Schol Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Schol Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Schol Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Schol Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Schol Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Schol Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Schol Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Schol Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Schol Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Schol Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Schol Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Schol Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Schol Harvey?
Yes.
to make distinctions in homes between mobile homes and homes that are prefabbed homes, and homes that are brick and mortar, and we want to try to set up different standards for each of those types, and I think sometimes we, that's a difficult thing to do. But the concern was, until we have a chance to look at this and see if there's issues with bringing older mobile homes in, is there a way we can at least slow the process down until we can discuss it on the board of P&amp;Z? I think it's that simple.
Yeah, and I'm in agreement with that.
I don't fully understand it. I don't have a problem slowing the process down, if that's what you're asking.
Well, I think, yeah, I think the concern was, the illustration given to me, it's very similar to when the state gave notice that there's no longer the billboards on Highway 47, that everybody and their mother ran, put a billboard down Highway 70, and you saw what happened. So the concern is, if the city were to start discussing this in P&amp;Z, and, because their product governments, as the sign we just discussed, take a long time to do things, is there a way to kind of slow the process down while we have this conversation?
I mean, I think a moratorium for the time being for us to actually discuss it and come up with a plan is a smart thing to do.
I agree.
And so I would be very supportive of that.
Agreed. I agree.
So how do we do that?
How many, do you want to make it a 10-year-old mobile home? And I threw that out, because that's what some surrounding communities have, do you want to put a, surprisingly, you guys may be somewhat surprised by this, but there is case law out of the A Circuit that says you can not allow mobile homes in your municipality. But I think that's a very tricky issue to get in, because then there's also concerns regarding affordable housing and HUD and those type of things. So, you know, my suggestion would be looking at surrounding communities that have a 10-year restriction on it. We'd look at a moratorium for mobile homes older than 10 years, which would be consistent with the surrounding communities, would not be shocking to anybody's conscience here. It would be maybe a 90-day or 120-day that would give us an opportunity to put something together for you guys to look at maybe more comprehensively.
I would suggest 120, because we can't even talk about signs in 90 days.
That's why I said 120.
Well, and I think this is an issue that has come up in various P&amp;Z meetings over the time that various members have brought up this concern, and it just never seems to get any traction, you know, because there's other things on the agenda, or we just don't know how to approach this issue, and that's kind of why I asked to bring it up.
Yep. Can, in this setting right here, can we make a motion?
Absolutely. You guys can institute a moratorium.
Well, before we do that, let me ask you a question. County had a restriction, Warren County, had a restriction on what they could do on mobile homes, and years of mobile homes that could be moved or moved around in here, and they did away with that. Is there a reason why they did that?
I have no idea.
That was recently that they did away with it.
They probably had a hard time enforcing it with the amount of area and the number of mobile homes and the roads and stuff, I mean, I can't imagine the county was going to be able to enforce that based on the area.
They had it on the books for quite a while before they recently took it off.
But did they enforce it? You can have things on the books that they're not enforcing. I mean, I can tell you, they didn't enforce it, because there's a lot of mobile homes in the county that if they were enforced, would be a beautiful thing.
It's not so much that it was what was moved around off a present location, rather than what was moved in. You couldn't move it in, you couldn't move it to a separate location, but if it was already established, you could leave it, and it was grandfounded in, basically. The only reason I'm bringing that up is because that was brought up at a meeting to me, and when I looked into it, because I was told it was enforceable, I found out that it had been done away with within the past year, two years.
I mean, I'm perfectly confident that a moratorium on, of some type, of some sort, would be perfectly legal, because it's just a temporary, you know, ban essentially on bringing anything 10 years or older in. And you, the purpose of a moratorium is to study it and look at it and look at it further. I'll look at that, I mean, and Warren County rewrote the zoning code when I was a prosecutor back in the day, and they never adopted it, so I don't really know, you know, kind of what their sequence of events for zoning is, or what they do. I don't, I'm, honestly, I'm not aware they ever made any changes to the zoning code, but I will definitely look at that. I mean, I've got the original zoning code for Warren County, I'll look at that, see what I can find out about it, and see what other communities are doing. Like I said, surrounding communities have a 10-year restriction, you know, so doing a moratorium consistent with that, I think, is perfectly reasonable.
Okay, so let's talk about, after Karen makes her motion, we have to talk about the administrative function of this. So, I mean, and obviously, we're not going to have a patrol officer sitting there checking mobile homes coming in, so I assume the way you enforce it is that Jack will no longer, or whoever does it, will no longer be allowed to hook up water and sewer to the site where those homes comes in, if the assessment can be made that it's an older mobile home. Because that's really the only control we have.
That's what I intend to put in the moratorium, general language with regards to no ability to connect to municipal utilities. And when we looked at this a couple of years ago, we actually found the best way to regulate the condition of a mobile home was through water and sewer because of the transient nature of the structure. So, that may be something you guys want to consider as well, because you obviously want to pass something that's enforceable. But I think for purpose of a moratorium, Alderman Ock, I think it's smart to tie the water and sewer, because that's always been our thought, is that's really the only way, you know, because somebody could bring it on a Saturday at night, under the cover of darkness, and who would know? But if they can't get water and sewer, it's just a structure that's sitting there, nobody's going to be able to occupy it. Because ultimately, what your concern is, is somebody occupying an unsafe structure.
You don't do motions? You just instruct the city attorney, and then at the next meeting, you can vote on it?
But the instruction will be effective today? I'm right, the ordinance, right? Can you back effective date?
No. I'll have to effect, it'll be effective the day it's passed, but I'll get it written for next meeting. I don't think there'll be a rash of, maybe I'm wrong. The billboard was pretty funny, because now there's every, I noticed Missouri State, Karen, has a bunch of billboards up too, not just Missouri.
Truman does?
Truman does.
Okay. I guess that's our instruction.
We'll get it done.
Next item on the agenda will be hearing from Director of Operations and Finance, Officer Terry Thorne.
My first item for you this evening is a discussion about bats at our food park property as we move forward with preparing that particular piece of land. The next piece of the puzzle is to complete the requirements to get all the environmental work done, and the first step of that, as required by U.S. Fish and Wildlife, is the bat survey. There are two components. The first, they will go out and do a mist net survey, which actually puts nets up in the trees, and determine presence of Indiana bats, and write a report related to that. If in fact they catch Indiana bats in their nets, then there is a requirement to equip them with radio tracking devices, and they are then tracked back to find their roost trees, and how many bats emerge from that area, and then complete a more thorough report to U.S. Fish and Wildlife. These assessments can only be completed by licensed assessors, and can only be done between May 15th and August 15th. If we're lucky, and in the first portion of the study, there are no Indiana bats caught, then that will be the end of the study, and the report will be completed, and it'll be over. A total for that portion is $11,250. If in fact Indiana bats are caught and need to be tracked, the second step is a cost of $10,350 plus the tracking equipment. So total cost, if both portions are needed, is $21,600 plus equipment costs.
And I have all sorts of terrible questions, like, how do you know they're Indiana bats? They have little Hoosier State t-shirts on. But, so what makes this unique? Is this going to be required of all people who do a development in a heavily wooded area? Is that what triggers this?
Yes, it is currently required, everyone who.
So, in theory, a private individual who would have bought this lot, and let's say wanted to eliminate all the trees, in theory, would be subject to the same, or is it?
Yes.
Okay, so it's not?
It's not just because it's the city, it's because it is a wooded area, and it would apply to any wooded area.
So if I was to buy a piece of property in Warren County that was wooded, five acres, and decide I was going to build a house, I would have to do a bat study?
Yes.
When did this develop?
I don't know. The first I heard of it was related to our sewer project, and there was an area that was somewhat wooded, and we were able to circumvent that area so that we did not have to do a bat study, just to get the sewer line through there. So, I don't know when it came into place, but it's been in place for a while.
What if they're not Indiana bats? What if they're different?
For Ohio, it's okay.
What if Ohio bats?
If they are red-eared bats, which are northern long-eared bats, are also a protected species, but you are not required to track those unless you choose to do so.
If we catch Indiana bats, can we charge Indiana for rent? Because they were nesting in Missouri?
I don't know, that's a good question. Maybe we could charge them $10,000.
Boy, that makes us just as much sense as this does.
I agree.
They got houses in Columbia, they're protected, that's protected.
So, what happens if you have Indiana bats? Do they?
Relocate.
Does the, well, no, that was my question, does the Forest Service come in and then relocate those bats, I assume, back to Indiana?
I can't answer my question.
Arkansas.
I did not go that far. My hope is that there are no Indiana bats.
Oh, golly geebers.
Oh, that's good.
That's my hope.
So if you've got five, if you've got five acres of ground that you want to buy, would you allow us to relocate our Indiana bats to your property?
Not if I can't collect rent.
Probably at least three quarters of your body weight.
This is a good article for the paper, by the way.
It is.
So, does anyone else want to open their canned questions?
I'm astonished that it costs so much to.
I guarantee you, everybody up here's in the wrong business, should be in this business, but.
Well, that was funny.
Well, I'm glad that's over.
Any other questions or comments? All right, we'll entertain a motion to approve the SCI Engineering Bat Survey Agreement in the amount of $11,250 for Phase 1, and for it not to exceed $9,000 for Phase 2.
No, $10,350 plus equipment cost.
Thank you for the correction.
You're welcome.
Not to exceed the amount of $10,350 plus equipment cost. I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Motion made by Alderman Ock, seconded by Alderman Delloy, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Schell Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
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 Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you.
Can I, can I ask a question, to the applicant, I guess, of the city? Since we're going to do a car show in September, I wonder if staff, somebody from staff needs to go out, to whoever shows up, and just tells them about the car show in September, so you might get some of those participants coming to the September event, it just doesn't make sense, that's our.
Sure.
Would they be welcome? I guess we should. As long as they're not from Indiana, they can come. If they're from Indiana, we got a problem. Anything else, Jack?
That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Next will be hearing from our economic development director, Michelle Slender.
Good evening, I have my economic development report for you this evening. You'll notice that Plaza Tire had a ribbon cutting on May 12th, which was very well-attended. And Cricket Wireless is open, and they are planning to have a grand opening slash ribbon cutting on June 26th, I'm sorry, June 25th. It'll start at noon, and it'll run for a while. They're going to have, I believe, the Girl Scouts and Boy Scouts there, they're going to have hot dogs and hamburgers, and then you can give a donation to the different organizations. And I attended Brecon again this year, which is an International Council of Shopping Centers retail convention that they have in Las Vegas, and while I was there, I met with several retailers I'd met with last year. They remembered Warrenton, they discussed our community, and I met with a new one this year, and I've actually received a call from them, so we are making contacts and getting people to know us from attending that convention.
Questions? Comments?
When was that grand opening at Cricket again? June 20th?
It is June 25th.
At 12 o'clock?
At noon.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next item on the agenda will be hearing from Finance Manager, Kyla Frigg.
First item I have is the accounts payable for the month. There is a $314,593 payment for construction for Phase 1 of the sewer plant expansion on there, and also debt service for the revenue bonds associated with that project of $432,340. So the total amount that I'm requesting payment for, for the month, is $978,983.99.
So, let me ask you a question, so I'm assuming that we did a 4% sewer and water tax rate, so we're kind of trying to sink where we're trying to get our rates to, so it ties back to the bonds, so we feel like we're pretty comfortable that our revenues off of fees will give us the ability to pay it? Is that the assumption?
Well, and we also have other phases of that.
Right, yeah, I realize that. But these are, these are the old bonds from prior projects?
Well, this is the $400,000, this is on the revenue bonds that we just did in 2014.
Okay, the 14 ones, okay. Any questions, comments? All right. Entertaining motion to approve the accounts payable in the amount of $978,983.99. Motion made by Alderman Schultz, seconded by Alderman Miller, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Schell Harvey?
Yes. Motion carries six zero. Next item I have is the financial report for April.
Self-tax is 6% or $119,156 over budget for the month. Industrial sewer is below the April budget by $30,037, and below the year-to-date by Talked to Coca-Cola, they were evaluating the underground piping for a week in April, which stopped production, and then they are also making longer runs for each product, like they're running it longer before they switch to another product, which is using less water, which is actually making them run more efficiently.
So is that going to be a new process for them to shut down periodically, so we should basically have considered that in the budgeting process? Because I mean, that was a pretty big drop in variance, but is that something typical for them, or is that just new?
For the underground stuff? I don't know about that as far as like the budgeting, but I think on the discharge end, I think we would need to consider that for next special.
That's a good, that's a good question, if they change their system?
New process or something.
Their process of waste?
They're just running it efficiently.
Yeah, what's that, is that going to have an impact on whatever, so I'm sure, as we sit down at the budget meeting next Tuesday, that's something we need to at least think about.
Right, I agree.
That's something we should probably look into, that they have revamped their waste system to, for less water, you should have well, in practice, considerably.
Any other questions, comments?
I have a couple of questions, so if I catch you off guard, let me, no, I noticed that our year-to-date connections fees are over budget by $23,000. Do you have a feel for that? Because we didn't do a whole lot of houses.
Well, but this also includes the city of Truesdale's sewer connections.
Okay.
And it had, we only budgeted like $12,000 for the whole year.
Right.
But there were five residential, and there were a couple of commercial connections.
Yeah, because I think it's real easy to forget, they were picking up fees, I mean, we may not see them on Jack's report, but there may be something going on in Truesdale that's also causing that. And the other thing I noticed, I had, reading through this, since it was like the three month, or the nine-month period, so you're almost at the end of the year, looks like almost every department is under budget and expenses, for the most part. But the police rev, the revenue coming in from the police department is also under budget, so I'm assuming that's related to staff turnover? Is that fair?
Yeah, it's staff turnover as well as fine revenues being down.
Okay. So we're not writing all these way more tickets, forcing people out of town?
Nope.
Because they're going too fast through town.
Okay, all right. We didn't make a fortune off of the interstate, so we're way over budget because of the interstate.
So, do we have any questions on the financial, please?
Any questions, comments?
I think he's sarcastic enough for all of us tonight.
Was that intended to be sarcastic?
I did want to mention that we have had several customers contact our cashiers regarding their mail, they haven't received utility bills yet. So, when we talked to the post office, as of yesterday, they were having to send the bills back to St. Louis to get sorted again, and then they were coming back here. So, today, they said that they would be in the mail stream today. So what we're going to do is hold off on charging the late fees until end of business day on May 20th, which will be?
June 20th.
June 20th, thank you.
I hope we took advantage of the situation and told them, hey, by the way, you can automatically have these bills paid. It's so convenient, you get, you get a little notice on email saying, this bill is due, and they'll automatically take it out of your account, so you don't have to worry about a late fee. So that's really a nice, nice feature.
I don't know if they work in that angle, but.
So worth a try.
Yep. That's all I have.
Okay. All right. I believe the next item on the agenda will be speaking with the chief police, Greg Hattishow.
Good evening, all. The only thing I have this evening is bid tabs for the upgrade to the video server. That's the box in the back that basically provides the video stream to Charter that everybody sees on the local access channel. The current machine is probably around nine or 10 years old, so, you know, we're looking at upgrading that with basically a refurbished unit. So, you know, we did budget $3,500 for that last year, or in this fiscal year, and the closest that I got to that was $3,523. Another thing to put that over was the shipping. So Video Service of America is, for those bidder.
So it's informational, so we don't need to act on anything?
I'm sorry?
We don't need to act on anything? That's just information?
I do need approval.
We're entertaining a motion to approve a bid, but I just wanted to know if there's any questions or comments?
Not on this, I do have a question on something else.
Not on this?
Not on.
I think he's sarcastic enough for all of us tonight.
Was that intended to be sarcastic?
I did want to mention that we have had several customers contact our cashiers regarding their mail. They haven't received any utility bills yet. So, we talked to the post office, as of yesterday, they were having to send the bills back to St. Louis to get sorted again. And then they were coming back here. So, today they said that they would be in the mail stream today. So what we're going to do is hold off on charging the late fees until end of business day on May 20th, which will be...
June 20th.
June 20th, thank you.
I hope we took advantage of the situation and told them, hey, by the way, you can automatically have these bills paid. It's so convenient. You get an old notice, an email saying this bill is due and they'll automatically take it out of your account. So you don't have to worry about a late fee. So that's really a nice, nice feature.
I don't know if they're working that angle, but...
So worth a try.
Yep. That's all I have.
I believe the next item in the agenda will be speaking with the Chief of Police, Greg Haddishow.
Good evening, all. The only thing I have this evening is bid tabs for the upgrade to the video server. That's the box in the back that basically provides the video stream to Charter that everybody sees on the local access channel. The current machine is probably around nine or 10 years old. So, you know, we're looking at upgrading that with basically a refurbished unit. So, you know, we did budget $3,500 for that last year, or in this fiscal year. And the closest that I got to that was $3,523. Another thing to put that over was the shipping. So Video Service of America is the lowest bidder.
So it's after informational, so we don't need to act on anything?
I'm sorry?
We don't need to act on anything? That's just information?
I do need approval.
We're entertaining a motion to approve a bid, but I just wanted to know if there's any questions or comments? Not on this, I do have a question on something else. Not on this? Not on this. Entertaining a motion to approve the bid for Video Services of America in the amount of $3,523. Is it $3,523?
Yes, sir.
Because on the grand total, it was $3,940.
No, $3,523.
$3,923 for a little bit.
$3,523, sir.
$3,523. Obviously having issues tonight. Obviously having issues tonight.
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Alderman Schultz, seconded by Alderman Miller. Go, 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 please.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Deloitte?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Shell Harvey?
Yes.
Alder Person Castily?
Yes.
Motion carries six, zero. I believe Alderman Ock has a question for you. Yeah, when I was reviewing Gabrielle's, you know, capital budget that she gives us, I noticed the telephone system hadn't been paid. So that would stand as an outstanding in-progress item. But I will also understand that it's now in place and how's that going? Or...
The telephones are in place. So we're operating simultaneously right now with the old system and just giving everybody an opportunity to get used to the new system. Our cutoff, cut-over is scheduled for the 24th of this month. I don't really see any issues going forward. They're working fine.
So will this appear to be seamless for people calling in? Or is there going to be some other feature that...
No, there's, you know, there will be slight interruptions in service as we cut one line from, you know, one machine to the other. But it's basically going to be seamless.
I had a couple of things, too. I was wondering, are you seeing anybody using our drop-off area or Amazon?
I'm only aware of one individual that inquired about it and used it.
Okay, because my husband used it. But I'm wondering if we should find some way to advertise that again? You know, whether the paper picks up the information that we have, that drop-off area for safety or whatever.
Sure.
And then, did you want to make any comment about Officer Swafford in our wonderful banquet?
Sure, I can. What was that, the 25th of May? Officer Swafford was recognized by Mental Health America with the McAtee Award for exemplary service as a crisis intervention team member. He kind of went above and beyond with a student at the middle school that was totally, flew under the radar for us because, you know, we never really saw it at the command staff level. But our community mental health liaison was actively involved in that. And she nominated him for that award. And he was awarded that again back in May. Very impressive. He really does shine in that regard. You know, he's a great example of the sort of community service that the police department strives to provide.
One of the things I'd add to that is if you ever get a chance to go to it, if we have another officer and get a chance to go, I highly recommend it. I mean, it was amazing, some of the stories along with Officer Swafford. There were some others amazing stories there from, you know, even Hawk Point, Troy, and not just St. Louis city and county. I mean, small towns. They had recipients and the stories that... It was, like you say, a lot of officers going above and beyond their duty
Right.
and not necessarily doing it to shine. And, you know, they didn't know they were going to get this, get these things. And then Dan Clark gave one of the most moving speeches I think I've ever heard in relation to law enforcement officers. And I think it was something that could have been passed on to everybody that, especially with regards to what they call the Ferguson factor nationwide and all that stuff. But just to hear what he had to say that day, that's something that should have been shouted from the rooftops rather than all the other stuff we hear every other day on the news. Again, thank you for inviting us. And like I say, if you ever get a chance to go, I highly recommend it.
It was an honor.
I think we have some pictures posted on our website.
There are, on the Facebook page.
Anybody would like to see that? You know, he's well-favored in our community.
He is indeed.
A lot of people do like him. Any other questions or comments? All right. Next item in the agenda will be hearing, thank you. Next item will be hearing from Ground Maintenance Director Brad Brusich.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. We have amended the ordinance, the streetlight ordinance to conform with Ameren's new way of doing their streetlights. There is one thing I need to add to this. So, where it's on number seven there, it says, really the only thing we're doing is locating a N E M A weather tight enclosure and support structure. Has to be added in there. That has been approved by the city. So, and then they're locating the box two to five feet from the power source and 10-foot clearance from the transformer door. And what that does, what they're wanting to do is, right now, the fuses are located inside the light pole. Well, a number of times the light pole is what's knocked over and they can't get to it. So they have to go back to the transformer and do it this way. All they do is open up the box, reach in, pull the plug, kills those, however many streetlights are on that from that box. It's easier to get to and lots safer for everybody. So that's what Ameren is, their new standards. And we just want to comply with what they have. That's the only change we're going to make. But that, I have to add that, and support structure, too, in there.
Questions, comments, Brad? Out here? Thank you, Brad. Next item in the agenda will be bills to ordinances. I'll entertain a motion for the first reading of Bill Number 16-16.
Call for first reading of Bill Number 16-16. Or I'll make the motion. In a second.
Motion made by Alderman Shell Harvey, seconded by Alderman Deloitte.
In order in submitting the budget of the City of Lawrence, Missouri for fiscal year 2015, 2016.
Entertaining a motion for the second reading and passage of Bill Number 16-16.
So moved. Second.
Seth Miller?
Yeah.
Motion made by Alderman Deloitte, seconded by Alderman Miller.
In order in submitting the budget of the City of Lawrence, Missouri for fiscal year 2015, 2016.
Go, 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 please.
Alderman Deloitte?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Shell Harvey?
Yes.
Alder Person Castily?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes. Motion carries six, zero. Next item will be the, entertaining a motion for the first reading of Bill Number 17-16. So moved.
Second.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Shell Harvey, seconded by Alderman Deloitte.
In order in submitting Section 540.010, subsection 7, of Chapter 500 of the Municipal Code of the City of Lawrence, Missouri relating to the minimum standards for streetlight construction.
Entertaining a motion for the second reading and passage of Bill Number 17-16.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Schultz, seconded by Alderman Miller.
In order in submitting Section 540.010, subsection 7, of Chapter 500 of the Municipal Code of the City of Lawrence, Missouri relating to minimum standards for streetlight construction.
Go, 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 please.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Shell Harvey?
Yes.
Alder Person Castily?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Deloitte?
Yes.
Motion carries six, zero. Can I ask a question on the ordinance we just passed? Who does this really apply to? I mean, does it apply to pre-existing streetlights or...
No, just anything new that goes in, any subdivisions put in, anybody that puts up a streetlight, this will...
Okay.
This will go to them.
So it's really from here going forward? So you're not going to be sitting here discussing grandfathered in streetlights, I assume?
Yeah, no, the ones that are there now, that will stay. Anything new will conform to this and...
It's a good question, though, Alderman.
I wasn't trying to be funny. I mean, I just, you know, I mean, when we put new stairs in, I'm sure people think about, what does that mean to me?
In the event one's knocked over, are they going to have to be to the new standard? Are they going to have to put the...
It's a good question.
That's a good question, also.
I'll have to ask Ameren that, see how that's going to...
What they require.
I suggest we make them put the lines under the ground.
I don't think so, because then it would actually mean that we'd have to redo, they'd have to dig everything back up.
Take all the conduit.
Bring that conduit back up to the thing, you know, and then re... I kind of doubt it. I think if it's knocked over, they'll either go up back the same way with the fuse inside the pole. But like I say, anything new, any new subdivisions, any new streetlights put up, that would probably fall into that.
Excellent. All right, next item would be Resolution Number 1316 now. Entertaining a motion for the reading and passes of Resolution Number 13, or 316, sorry.
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Alderman Miller, seconded by Alderman Shell Harvey.
A resolution determining the intent of the City of Lawrence, Missouri to reimburse itself for certain capital expenditures.
Go, 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 please.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Shell Harvey?
Yes.
Alder Person Castily?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Deloitte?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries six, zero. Next item will be executive session. I'll entertain a motion to close the regular board of Alderman meeting and go into executive session for real estate and personal issues. So moved. Motion made by Alderman Shell Harvey, seconded by Alderman Schultz. Go, go, vote.
Alderman Shell Harvey?
Yes.
Alder Person Castily?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?